This conference will now be reported.
Mr. Jeff. And Mr. Fish.
President.
Sir, you do have a quarrel. Would you like to go through the agenda?
Yep, so go through the agenda.
Alright, the first item would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have a copy of it? Are there any additions or corrections to that? Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item would be the audience comments on the agenda items. Are there any comments from residents that would like to comment on the agenda?
Moving right along.
You have, I don't see on the agenda, and I'm sorry, but you have the, we should put this on because it came in after the agenda. If there's no objections, we have the resignation of Mr. Hades from the board, and the board needs to discuss how they would like to proceed in filling that position. And so we could put that under new business? Item B?
Sure.
Does that work?
Yeah.
So that would be twelve B. So then we'll add that to the resignation and discuss how to proceed in filling that page. Alright, you got a copy of the minutes? Are there any changes? Or corrections or? If not, we would have a, I think, motion to approve the minutes.
My second there. More motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that would take us to the field report. Mitch?
Sure, buddy.
Just there.
Getting old, I'm using my glasses here. The water plant, everything's working, the skater, number two skater, it completely did it, connected it, it's online. We've got it back up, working wonderfully, and I'm grateful for that. It gives us some peace of mind, not have to worry about it. The AC, you guys know that was completed last time around, so it's working. We had a VFD fail on the number one RO, we replaced that, so both ROs are up and working. The wastewater treatment plant, everything's fine with it, it's making good F of them. No issues with the generators, no issues with the list stations. Everything in the wellfield is working. PC controls was in last week, they calibrated it, all the yearly calibrations of all the flow meters. Everything's working good.
And you got all those ruts filled and going back to the wellfield?
We fixed that, so that's been completed. The guys from the park came and asked us what we were doing. They said they still have a bid out to redo that, but for now it's good. So I think they're gonna do something different down the road, but for now we can access the wells, no problem.
Any questions of that?
The water meters, I brought the two in the case the board wants to look at it. I didn't have any questions.
Discuss that on the agenda.
Okay.
Any questions of?
Yeah, I just, how come the water usage is so low? And it seems like we have full house here earlier.
I assume that not as many people are here, or we replaced the meters this year. Maybe the new meters are more accurate, even though they're calibrated every year. But we're seeing lower flows.
I mean, it's, what? Thirty percent lower?
Thirty percent, yes, almost, yeah, almost fifty. Maybe coronavirus has kept some people.
They should be taking more showers.
Well, the hotel, the hotel is way off. And that's probably a big consumer.
Sure, I don't know about that.
And COVID, I'm sure has a lot to do with it too. But fifty percent is a lot, but that, and the meters though, I mean, you feel it's accurate?
I feel it's accurate, sure.
Yeah, that's amazing, really.
Well, accurate, considering that the meters is correctly, well, the residential use is probably off, but.
Well, you said this is the number coming out of your plant?
Out of the plant, that's why I was, I'm sorry, yes.
So that's the gross volume?
Right.
Just wondered.
Okay, nothing else for me? That brings us to Motown.
Good morning. I met with Michelle for our tour around the property. Our first tour, I explained to her all our areas and we kind of, I took her step by step what we do, section by section, from Newport to Union to Cave Drive from the water plant. We didn't get a chance to go to the back yet until I clear all that out so we can drive together back there once I get that bush hog and then push back. We came back on another day after we finished that meeting. We came back and got a total count of all palm trees and that get trimmed every year. And the count is actually pretty accurate. It's like seventy-five dollars more after we were done counting all the palm from the estimate. So I did, what I did is I gave a complete breakdown. I still kept the, I mean, I didn't change nothing on the estimate that you guys approved. So we have a breakdown of quantities, where, location, and stuff like that. And once the guys are done trimming that, we'll take another on our following drive. We'll make sure that everything that we looked at got trimmed and taken care of. I got mulch being delivered. I think I'm gonna deliver the first week of January and I'm gonna use the same area that we've used every year by the parking lot arena on that side. We'll get that, so if you guys see mulch piled up, that is our mulch.
And we always use the natural mulch on your areas.
So the guys are actually working on the trimming, the weeds, to try to get all that, especially on forty-one. The wellfield, obviously, I got the bush hog scheduled as well for the first week of January, after the new year. We'll come in, we'll do the bush hog and the pushback within that area that we normally do on a yearly basis. That's part of our contract with you guys. And I'm also gonna do, I showed her the area, that retention area, Mitch? The one that we checked back there.
Back there, yeah.
I'll get that one too. So we should have all that, you know, annual stuff that we do this time of the year caught up and done. I did submit the, I did get a hard copy of the electrical, but Cal's, it's already been approved and.
Yeah, we'd, you'd given an estimate about three thousand and then we got a proposal for twenty-four hundred.
Yep.
And so we went ahead and approved that. You guys approved it not to exceed three thousand, so.
So I found our copy, it was, you know, I just wanted to show it to you guys, you guys knew what it was gonna say. But it's not a big deal. Yeah, it is, because I have, that runs quite a bit of irrigation on Newport Drive. And I showed Michelle the areas that that could be affected by that timer there right now. So, I mean, it's just completely shot. It doesn't need to be redone. But I mean, it was pretty, pretty much in, and I think what we're gonna do from moving forward is we'll get our, we're gonna have a better system now that we kind of understood what areas are. She could ask the questions and I answer back and respond back to Chris's notes as well. So, no estimates right now. We should be done with the palm tree trimming by Monday.
The LCC meter that's on that unit over there, what does that, what's it powering?
It's not, well, I don't know exactly. It probably powers the light poles, the medium, as well as our timer for that. And I didn't know, but yeah, it's gonna require permanent. So it might take a while for them to get this all resolved there. So, you know, I, if I have to manually come up here and we have to run water to just keep everything up until they get this resolved, we will. Because it does run a good portion of the medium out there.
What, what's gonna motivate them to fix it, do you think? In other words, what's gonna keep it on the front burner so they do come to fix it?
Oh, I don't know. Cal's got the, very good with that, the company?
Oh, that's, that's doing the pedestal?
Yeah.
It is, let's see if I can get it in my notes. But it's, it's an electrical firm.
I know, but, I mean, do we have a, when are they gonna come and do it, do you know?
They're scheduled to do it right now. I'm surprised they haven't started yet, but they will be doing it any day.
Because we're in dry season, so if it's that important, I think it should, we should get on it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure.
I'm with you, yeah, yeah. I'm with you.
If we have to run manually, I can manually run the valves to get water.
Why, why don't you have power, I don't get it. Power on the lights, why don't you have power to your unit? I mean, I went over and said it and, you know.
I have no power from the connection to that. There's powers, I don't know if it's underneath powering, I don't know exactly what that feeds. I don't even know if it does feed the light poles. You know, I, I'm pretty, I've kind of feed other stuff.
They gotta track it.
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
So you have no electric to the post right there, just the meters? The only thing working is the meter, I'm sorry? The only thing that's working is the LCC.
Yeah, I have no power going after the breaker box and everything into my timer.
And this is all included with what we're getting here, they're gonna find that?
Yeah, it's all one, they have to do everything. They're gonna have to do the pedestal, everything, it's just a must.
Did we suggest how they do it? Are they gonna do it cement again, or are we gonna build it differently? I mean, it's.
It's, I don't know. Chris met with them, he knew what the issue was, because he brought it to Robert's attention.
But we want to make sure it's built, that it's gonna last like fifty years or something. We don't want to put something in there that's gonna, be made out of treated wood or something and it just, you know, rats out and shit.
I think they, you'll be pretty sure it's. Yeah, if they have to do the, and the thing is that, remember, we gotta go back in history here where we used to get saltwater through our irrigation system and I'm pretty sure that that hurt the rebar and the corroded box and all that, so I mean, it does. You know, that gets hit by irrigation, literally right by a kind of box.
Plus, there must be code for that, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. It's gotta be code, yeah, they're, they know what they're doing, that's what.
So I think the kids just call them every few days and say, come fix the box.
Can I read?
Yeah, if they do, when they do, if it's not, or they fall down behind or something, they'll, they'll get off their water or something.
And you can see no, it's.
So, plus the hurricane, don't you even think of that?
I think a lot of it was the saltwater back, where we used to get that saltwater back in the days. It's just, it's a panel, it's a panel box, I mean, it's metal, it's gonna run it out. You know, it even ate the, the reason it broke off, the rebar even inside, I mean, it went through the concrete.
So, I mean, nothing too major, nothing too crazy, but we got a lot planned for the first of the year, so that's when you're gonna see the majority of all your proposals working.
Did you cover the exotic renewal, you're gonna give us a proposal for long pace drive?
We said we didn't want to do that. It's just dead, I mean, there's no reason to take it out.
It's already starting to decay right now, so I think you'll be fine, I think, truly.
Just let it?
Yeah, just let it do its natural, natural thing as far as that part, and I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
That's pretty much it, thank you guys.
Well, you got that hardwood proposal, when does the last, when's the last?
It doesn't happen till spring. It was submitted, but it should have been only palm tree trimming.
Okay, because I drove it and I go, I just.
No, 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 I mentioned it the other, on the last meeting, because we overlooked that bolt thing, but I know. I'd rather not do it now, wait till spring when you really need it. It's way too early right now. My office just sent all the bolts on the train. Okay, alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Merrick, Chris, myself.
Yeah, you too. Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Okay, that'll take us to the district manager, and we've got a couple of financials. The assessments are starts, assessment money's starting to come in. November is usually a, right when it starts, and I think right now we have almost five hundred thousand, little over five hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand that you received today. I can answer questions. Everything's been sent to the auditors. We're hoping that they'll get it done in a more reasonable timeframe right now. And I know Terry's got some questions, and she and I are gonna meet after this meeting.
Yeah, no, no problem with the financials, so, financials.
Any questions?
I do, yes, sir. I'm happy to say, I'm really happy to say that Michelle and I went through the water plant, because we're the newbie, and Mitch took us all through the plant, and it is in really excellent shape. I mean, really good. I don't know what I'm looking at, but I do know what looks bad and what it doesn't, it's in really great shape. Which means, when we come to you, there was a wish list that came out about three years ago that Ron gave us, and it was pretty extensive and it was pretty expensive. And for the next meeting, I would like you to please get us that wish list with approximate costs on it, today's dollars, if you would. Because there's a lot of different things flying around, so I'd like that on the agenda for yours, okay? But having said that, and depending totally on what you have to tell us and what we have figured out, it looks like we're gonna be in a position where we can return some money based on expenses coming up. And my question to you is, that being the case, I assume it would be a reduction in non-advalorem on the 2022 budget when we do it? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, so we need to get that figured out pretty accurately by June, is it?
June is, that's a little late. We'll start in March.
Oh, good, that's better.
By June, your June meeting, you need to, I'm not sure when it falls, but June fifteenth is like the deadline to get the budget
Right.
tentatively approved. It's not totally approved, it's tentatively approved, and then we have sixty days. We have to get it to the county, sixty days before the public hearing for adoption.
Gotcha, and the deadline is October?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, in my mind.
Actually, August, but, because we have to get the tax rule to the county in September, by September one.
My question is, in my mind, I have one little vote of five, but in my mind, we are in a unique position right now when the assessment is done on the water plant. The unique position is, we can, we can repair anything that hasn't been repaired over the last five years. We can get the water plant, which is in great shape, up to speed, so it's a hundred percent, because I hate aggravation. I don't like bandages, I like knowing what we've got. After we do that, that will tell us if and what we can give back. And the way we give it back is by a reduction in the non-advalorums. So a lot is gonna depend on the wish list. And the reason I'm putting that weight on you is, I have heard numbers from Ron as high as five million dollars, and I have heard numbers for a water line of a million dollars three years ago. Those numbers scare me, because they always run over. So I would just, rather than go by that, and it was in meetings, I would like an accurate, up-to-date wish list that will make us good shape for at least the next two or three years.
I believe it's part of the budget right now. The budget was adopted with a CIP, and then Ron's list, basically Ron and Mitch got together, they put together a list, the biggest, the number one priority was the bar meters.
Right.
And that's what the board jumped on, but there is that list. And if it's not, so it should be on the website. If it's not, if it wasn't included in the budget, we'll get it to, we can do that.
I think that list was going to be updated by Ron.
Right.
And that, I haven't seen the updated list.
Yeah, I'll get back, I'll get together with Ron and we'll go over this and update the, basically the CIP, the Kephalin group plan. And that always includes pieces for renewal and replacement, like water.
Yeah, it's over twenty years.
Yeah, I know, I know. And the CIP includes accurate schedules for planned maintenance, planned obsolescence items and stuff?
Yes, it should include that. And again, I need to get together with Ron and.
Boy, he's gonna be the answer man for you.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking is, he got a circuit board from some town somewhere else, I don't know how the hell he did it, for this generator out here, and that's a hundred twenty-five kilowatt industrial grade generator that has to run.
Yes.
So he has convinced me very easily, very well, that when that board goes, I don't like hundred thousand dollar surprises. So I would rather we have that planned now, and that the wellheads are in solid shape.
Sure.
You know, I know you're not mind readers, but there are some things that Ron brought up. Yeah, that's all. I'd like to know, I think we'd all like to know where we're at.
Sounds good, yes.
But I, I think I just want to throw something out here. I think it's the intent of everybody on the board to return some of that assessment.
Absolutely.
But there's, there's certain screws and bolts that fit into that. I've been working with Cal, because I like to play with numbers. But you have, besides your factors, yes, you have that huge, you know, built up list, but you also have maybe the sale of this land, how much will we get? And that's gonna really lower that list, it all depends on how the board, you know, decides to use that money. But to save right now without all those nuts and bolts, you know, I hate to say refund assessments, which I think we can, but how much we don't know.
No, I'm with you.
And I don't want to be put on the line.
Oh, no, 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 I'm with you.
To throw out a number right now.
I'm, oh, no, no, I'm with you, hundred percent. And the thing is, and just, and I'm not, this isn't Terry, Terry and I have talked about this, she's giving me classes, so.
Before you're out the board.
Before you.
Oh, of course, we've been waiting for it. Now she won't talk to me. I can't drive down the street. But I just want to say this, and this is my one little vote. I am petrified of running where we hope something happens. I believe in absolutes. Now, I know, and I, I think we should have a workshop on development, to be honest with you, with the public. And I'm gonna push for that, but here's my fear. There are a few developers who have talked to me in the past, talked to neighbors, well, we'd like to put a boat storage over here, or we'd like to put something over here. Okay, if we do that, then we don't sell the whole parcel. If we do that, we don't get the ERCs. If we do that, we lose out on maybe other opportunities. So that's something we really gotta figure out. So I don't want to, she's right, but I look at that money, if and when it comes, as icing on the cake. I would rather we're solid. Then if we get a windfall, we're all happy. You know what I mean? We can always give more money back, you know, but it, I, I just like a solid footing, so I want to deal with what we've got right now.
Yeah, but I just want to clarify, I guess, I don't want this out of proportion.
No, no, no.
From what you said is, you know, we pay off this debt, let's say the debt is five hundred thousand a year. You also said there's a construction delay of two million. So how can, just looking at those two numbers?
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
Can I say?
No, you're right.
Yeah, so.
You gotta look at the timing, two of the others.
You gotta cut up the pie and see timing.
You're right.
And bring it back and find out what you need to have.
So I do like the absolute.
Yeah.
But the absolute isn't until we start, the board starts discussing this.
That's exactly right, oh, no, that's exactly right. That's right. Our intention is all in the same place. But I'm gonna tell you, my intention is not, over the next four years, to have to go knock-knock, we made a mistake, we're gonna need an extra two hundred a month. I don't want to do that. So we're both saying the same thing.
Yes, yes. Yeah, you want to build up reserves in advance of when you need the monies and so forth. And even a little bit extra to make sure you're ready for unexpected things.
Yeah, yeah. So this is, there's a lot of infrastructures that was put in the sixties, and there's asphalt pipe with water, there's a lot of variables. I would just like, with our experts, to have a real solid feel for over the next five years, what it looks like, and if it's budgeted and if it's scheduled or not, that's all.
And they're sure the components too, we may want to look at it further than five years.
Yeah, I'm with you.
It may be a five, ten years.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, when you get past five years, it gets more iffy.
Yeah.
It's part of time.
And I think everybody should understand, the board and the management company did not put us in this position.
No, 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 no.
It was the deadbeats that didn't pay. And unfortunately, it was big deadbeats, so it was sizable, and it was out of our hands, so we just fixed the problem doing that.
It's, if I, and Ron will give you the answers, he's got them at the top of his head, I know he does.
Yes.
I've seen him spit it out, but this is three years later. I would just like an accurate assessment. I'm gonna give you an example.
An update.
He said the main line out to the wellheads, mile and a half long, is concrete asbestos. And he said there's problems with that, okay? Whether there is or not. Now, he mentioned at one time, both of you guys had a, had a meeting in here, and he did a slide presentation. And there were three things we could do. We could develop the back, or we could develop the back and do something else. Or, he mentioned, putting in a much less expensive water plant, a pumping station, over here along the canal, with some kind of new technology where they sink pipes into the ground about fifteen feet, that get the groundwater from the canal, which is a lot more water. And it's just a matter of jetting the water to the plant directly across lot thirteen. The number he gave us at the time was a million dollars for a new line, or two hundred fifty thousand to do that. And I don't know if he was doing that to double the water capacity, which I don't think was the case, or if he was doing it instead of doing that line to save seven hundred fifty thousand bucks. That's a lot of dough. But what he did say was, if we did that, then they would make the forty-nine acres a water district. So there were a lot of variables, I'd just like to know where it sits today. And he's got the answer.
Yes, he does. He does, and we'll be downloading his brain too.
Yeah, okay.
You don't let him retire.
No, no.
Any other questions on the financials? Need a motion to accept the financials as presented?
I'll put forward a motion to accept the financials as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to the field report, and everyone's had an opportunity to review this. Robert talked about a few of the ID items. The lakes, Chris has identified some hydrolog, so we'll talk with your lake maintenance people, that should be taken care of. It almost looks like it's a crusted algae, once it grows to the top, it's a submerged weed. Once it comes to the top, you can see birds walking on it, it's not algae, it's, it's a weed. And he's got a picture of it in there. He also says that EarthGuard, and remember, they're doing this at their expense, but he's got it ordering for ninety golden cannes, he's gonna put thirty on each lake. And that is gonna be sometime in January, should it happen any time. Chris said he'd check on it as January inspection. The, he identified the town on the palm trees, and Michelle and Robert identified that in the report. Talked about some signs that are down. The, if you look at the concrete there, that's still taped off, so the contractor will repair it, place it. We're gonna ask Mitch if he can go in and suck that silt out of that catch basin on the forty-one median. It's filled in a little bit, and we want to get it before it becomes a problem.
Okay.
He's also identifying some culverts that are locked up. We have, Chris has a worker, and he comes out once or twice a month and takes care of the maintenance items. Some of the things he's gonna take care of is that those flumes and the culverts, and clean those out so that they do get. Now, if we need Mitch's factor truck, Mitch will get in and suck those out. But for right now, most of that's all. One seventy-four Sunset Cave, he pointed that out as a concern, and during the engineer's report, David's gonna report on that. The pepper, we did turn several of the properties. Uh, the Pepper, we did turn several of the properties over to the tenant code enforcement, and we just didn't get any responses, and, and they told, they called us and said, "Are you sure you wanna do this?" "Yes, we wanted to do it," so we haven't heard back from them. Uh, we'll get with the hotel, uh, as far as the torn flag, hopefully, or the real estate office usually took care of that, so hopefully they'll replace that. Um, only other thing I had, you can see a picture of that electrical panel that, uh, you know, like I say, we've already issued a, because it was less money, which I thought was a direction. Uh, he said parcel 13's looking good, they are staying on top of that.
It's great.
Then, uh, the K's Drive, uh, as Michelle said, that's our first guy off the... So, and then he's got some pictures on page nine at the bottom, the road that Mitch fixed. Other than that, uh, any questions on Chris's report?
I have, I have one.
Chris, ma'am.
It's, uh, on that report, it's page four.
Okay.
There's a picture of, um, and I see it on my block. At the end of the road, it's like those little swales, the front swales, end up in one area where I guess it's supposed to feed to the canal.
Yes.
Yes, feedback to the retention areas for that.
Yeah, but if you look at the picture, I don't see any...
It's just a natural swell. So, that's what he's pointing out, is that that's blocked, and it needs, they need to go in and dig that out and return it to the natural swell.
Now, do they dig it out all the way to the canal?
Uh, no, they'll just open it up, and the, the swell itself, I don't believe that's concrete. It's just, just a natural swell with sod on it.
Yeah, 'cause I'm surprised, looking at it, to me, there's one at the end of my street, and looking at it, looks like the street should flood, but as far as I know, it doesn't flood in the summer. But there's, uh, the owner of that house has put hedges there, so it's really, can't even go through that, it has to naturally turn itself. So, I was just curious.
If, if, if it's, if it's part of the drainage system, Chris does inspect them.
Yeah, alright.
Uh, there might be some privately owned, but, uh, most of them that look like this are all part of your store management system.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, requests?
He does a really nice job on the field report. He really, really does. I don't know if he can hear me, but he, I, I thought that from the, the first time I knew he was doing, because a really good job of these field reports. That's why I was asking him which Chris was, which one.
Yeah, well, Chris Pepin does those field reports.
Boy, does a nice job.
And most of your communication with the office, if I have somebody pick it up, it'd either be Chris Dudak or Nancy, who is, uh, an assistant DM with us. Uh, let's see, he, he talked about the palm tree, and we talked about the cleanup. So, other than that, I think that, uh, that's everything on the field report. Okay, and that brings us to the engineer.
Alright, good. Uh, Kayle asked me to look a little bit at, uh, 174 and 170, uh, Sunset K, that's where the two houses are being built right now. They're right next to each other. In fact, I would drop by there this morning, and took a look, and they were actually placing concrete at 170.
As of 6 o'clock this morning.
Oh, that, oh, well, they were about finished when I left.
I know, that's why.
Good. So, uh, we, we did look at 174, we looked at it a while back, when they were first starting some of the construction. You know, I've got some handouts I'll share with you all. And what that shows is, uh, this is tour construction, it shows the property line, and it shows where the easement itself is. Uh, as you're aware, the, the property lines are actually at the mean high water level, which is out in the water itself. And what, over, what they did as part of the fighting process is, they did establish some witness pins up the, on the uplands. And when we, when we went out there, we did some measuring, back to where the stem wall itself had been constructed, to get some dimensions and so forth. And from the dimensions we took and so forth, it appears they are outside the drainage easement with their construction. And, uh, on the, uh... And, and what I tried to do on this, uh, drawing is, show where the drainage easement is, and I got that matched in green. And then, the property line is shown in yellow, and you can see it's, it's, it's out there a little ways. And what we proposed to the homeowner is shown in the pink or red color. So, what they're gonna do is, they're gonna grade back their swell back to the, their stem wall and rear park, to make up for the difference, uh, that we need for the drainage line.
I think they did that, I think.
They, they, they're in the process of doing some regrading back there. They've got a string line right now, uh, from one side of the park to the other, to help reestablish that, that front. So, that's underway. The only thing I, I wanna communicate with them is their side yard. Right now, they've got their side yard coming all the way to the adjoining property. We may need to do some modification there.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it looks like they're okay. Uh, somebody questioned also about the height of the structure.
All the neighbors are wondering, "Why is it so high?"
They, they are building higher. They're building to an elevation of 9.5. A lot of the houses here are built to an elevation of eight, so they decided to put theirs up a little bit higher.
They wanna have the big one.
Yeah, well, that's what the neighbors are worried about, because they're sitting high. Are they gonna flood their homes or their lots?
And then, that's the key for the side yard drainage.
And the owner asked me a question, which I, I don't know why he asked that question. He asked, uh, was I okay, I have a two-story, was I okay with the height of my chimney? He's building a one-story, why would he care about the height?
42 feet.
That was odd.
And so, on the 42 feet. Okay, as far as the maximum height.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more building.
But she, well, what she's saying is, he's not gonna be near 42 feet.
He's a one-story home.
No, he won't be that high.
No, why would he ask the questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Could it be the elevation of the lot? How much fill they bring in for the, except the...
Well, they, uh, they do have, they built it up on stem wall, so they do have to fill, do some backfilling inside, footprint itself, before they put their concrete in. Uh, and then, of course, you know, we don't want them to bring up the adjoining grade all the way up to their finished floor. It needs to come up on the stem wall, and it's gonna have a little more exposed wall along a couple of the sides. And that's the only, if there's a negative, that's the negative.
Now, that's an owner builder. But I think there is an owner with construction, but there's also a builder. I think there's two that are actually doing this project.
Yeah, they may have multiple subs. Uh, I haven't been on the county website, so look at who may be subs on the project, who subs have picked up.
It sounded like, 'cause he, he said something to me, uh, 'cause he wants me to watch the property, if we see anything, and call him. He gave me his number, which I forwarded to you.
Yes.
And it, it sounded like he was having trouble with the contractor. Okay, so that's why I think there's a builder involved there somewhere.
He's probably hiring individual people to come in and do different things. I noticed he has, his stem wall has now been filled with concrete and so forth, and he's had a plumber come in, and the plumber's roughed in some of the plumbing already, the drains, the, the supply plumbing and so forth. So, he's, he's acting his own general contractor, and probably learning all the lessons, why, why it can be very intense building your own house.
Yeah.
Really?
The, every one of those streets has a center, center of the, um, street cut across. Where is it on that street? Is it between the house and any, one of the other houses?
No, no, the dedicated drainage swell, the, the bigger one?
No, I'm talking from the road, from the road back, from the road to the, to the swell.
I think it's at the end of each street, doesn't it?
Like all these conferences that we clean out here, and these are in the middle of the road, going north and south.
Correct, correct.
What, where's, where does that one line up on that property line? I mean, is that gonna be one of these?
No, no, it's actually, uh, let's see, I've got a copy of the...
'Cause I would think the east side would have been close to the center of the road.
He's on lot number 79.
79, yes.
Yeah, lot 79. And then, the, the swell that goes from the road back to the detention area is actually one, two, two, two lots up probably, to the east.
To the east, okay.
Two lots away from it.
So, it's with the house that's there already?
I think between those houses.
I think Russ was talking about the center line of the road itself.
Right, where this, where, where they'll have a cut, there's gonna have to be a culvert, uh, just like these, every single road has a culvert. It goes north and south.
And, and...
On both sides.
But they're not between every lot.
They're not between every lot.
Not between every lot, it's in the center of the street. The street comes up and peaks like that, and then goes like that, and then everything goes that way and that way.
Right, and what, what happens in that particular, uh, Sunset K is, you've got your drainage at the very west end, and then you've got another drainage way on both sides of the road that's to the east, and it happens to be like two lots over from where it was built.
Okay, 'cause nobody's put that in yet. I don't know who's, who's gonna be responsible for putting that culvert in.
Well, it's not actually a culvert, it's actually an open swell that goes back.
Yeah, uses that front swell. It's binary.
Yeah, but we get pipes under the sidewalk, so you're gonna have pipes running under the sidewalk on that one side.
Oh, to get out the swell.
Yes, in fact, that one picture in your field report, I think, showed a drainage way going underneath the sidewalk, reinforced sidewalk there.
It's not, I don't know if it's on that side, but maybe everything's crushed there, I just don't know.
I'd have to look in particular at that one there, how it's, uh...
I didn't really see one, that's why I was wondering.
No, I don't think one's there.
Oh, there's nothing there? Oh, it's probably just open drainage going down there right now.
Right, because of the sidewalk. I think what, maybe they're gonna do it when they fix the sidewalk or the driveway.
Well, whenever the, the last house where that culvert should be is, but maybe it won't go until then, I don't know.
I'll take a look at lot 77, 76, and see what, if it's there right now on Sunset.
Because on Wilderness, the last row?
Yes.
It has a culvert, and there's no, there's no, uh, building there. It's open land, but it's still underneath the sidewalk, culvert there. But on your street, it's not.
It's not, yeah. Okay, I'll take a look there.
'Cause we don't get as much water as the other streets, that's why.
Alright, just one...
Well, I'll take a look there before I leave.
Because he is so high, if that's where, I just was concerned, that's where the north-south flow is gonna be.
This is actually, uh, two, two lots to the east. Any other questions about, about your property?
But I do wanna say the owner's a nice guy.
Yeah, probably what I got, I got ahold of him, we had a good conversation. I sent him the information about what we're looking at as far as the rear lot.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, up after the side yard, just letting you know that we need to make sure that we do provide for drainage going from front to back.
So, and the other, the other thing in this picture, so that back wall that he's in, he's right at 20 feet, or does he have a gap?
No, he's got a gap, he's got, uh, I'm gonna say about six feet at one side, eight foot on the other side. So, he's got some room.
Is it customary for property lines to go into the high watermark?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it is down here, and in older flats and so forth.
Yeah.
And not, you know, even rear yard drainage years ago was very popular and so forth, and now it's kind of a no-no, they prefer to have it going with stormwater, like you say, and...
Yeah.
These rear lot lines are very hard to maintain.
Right, usually they're kept completely out of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So, this is something that's, uh, because of age.
Yeah, and this, this area has the, uh, natural wall, it's not a seawall. So, you do have some erosion that goes on over the years.
Anything else for David?
Uh, Tony's report, uh, Dan, you there?
I am here. Uh, we have a, we're trying to coordinate a meeting with PrepMax for next week, to continue the discussions on resolution of the lawsuit. And that's about all we've got. Uh, I did get a call from someone interested in parcel 13, referred them to Cal, so that we can keep all of the information that we're providing for any of these prospective purchasers consistent. And, uh, hopefully, I mean, the folks that are coming at us, we, we may be on the verge of getting something happening in that property, so our strategic discussions probably should happen sooner rather than later.
Can I back up, uh, Dan, the prep issue? They have met with Ron. Uh, they've had some discussion that, uh, they would like to pursue, uh, so they're trying to set up a meeting with Dan and I, and, uh, the two dates that were thrown out was this afternoon, or tomorrow, or Monday morning. So, hopefully, we're gonna have something fairly quick. And, uh, if we can come to a conclusion, uh, some type of a proposed settlement, then we bring it to the board at the next meeting.
Why, I don't know the answer to this. Why would they meet with Ron?
Uh, Ron, because they're basically talking about ERCs, and how they came up with the...
And, and I, I see, okay, consumption rights, okay.
I think it was, uh, just, I think the very next Monday, we met with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so right after the board meeting with them.
Now, that's all, I don't know what I'm talking about. That's all, uh, all of the boats, liverboards get, uh, a freshwater feed in the slip, but they're all pump out, there is no sewage removal, all pump out, which is dumped at a location over there somewhere.
Well, there are pump outs, but, uh...
Well, I mean, it is pump out.
Their argument is that they felt that their slips were assessed too bad. The board went through a process and analyzed all of the slips based on Ron's recommendation, and so they came up, uh, based on the length of the, uh, slip, and then, they, so they all had one feet, and if they had sewer or water. And, uh, some of them, the, the liverboards, I think was 40 feet and more, were at a different rate. So, uh, I think his biggest complaint, 'cause most of his are, you know, 25 to 40, and, uh, you know, he, he just got hit with a big bill, so like about a $20,000 increase.
Now...
'Cause they own so many.
So, the people specifically that are upset, if I hear this correctly, are, are, uh, people who own slips or people who are renting by the year.
Own.
So, it's people that own slips, and it's not just PrepMa, PrepMax.
PrepMax owns most of those. So, that's, I don't think it's a class action suit. I think it's just, right now, just PrepMax. Now, he's probably...
And Alligator Boys. There is a plan of, uh, PrepMax and Alligator Boys.
Okay, yeah.
But I think they're, you know, kind of related entities.
Now, are there liverboards, there's gotta be, there's liverboards that aren't part of PrepMax slips, right?
Yes.
And they were impacted the same way.
Yes, all, all...
All relative.
All the slips were.
Okay, and the rentals are impacted differently? Only rentals?
Not by the district.
No.
The owner who has absorbed a expense, probably increased the, the price of the, uh...
The slips, okay, okay.
Can I, can I answer?
Yeah, 'cause you're like, "Oh, with them."
Yeah. PrepMax owns A, C, and E docks, okay? C dock where mainly the new liverboards are, because it's water only, and the slips are less than 38-foot wide, they're still charged the same, but ERCs at .08 as A and D dock, which only have water. On A, B, C, only the N docks were increased, um, the large amount, and where the, what only docks got the increase was on the general fund, where it went from .08 up to .4. That's where the majority of the money was, from $34 up to $158, and that was across the board for everybody. F dock is all privately owned, and they were hit with the biggest .4, um, increase. G, they're kind of mixed this way, but right now, um, everything on E, even though they're liverboard, the spaces aren't wide enough to hold a 40-foot boat, which is the .4. Ron did his calculation, and any slip that was wider than 38-foot could hold a 40-foot boat, and they were the one that went to the .4 from .16 for water sewer. .08 for water, .08 for sewer, so PrepMax, right now, is the same as A, uh, B dock and D dock for the majority of those slips, because they haven't seen the .2 or the .4 increase on the water sewer side. They've only seen the increase on the general fund side.
So, I'm trying to, I don't know what I'm talking about. So, I'm trying to, I don't have horses in the race either. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, because that seems to me, for them, to be incredibly confusing, and there's no parity, and, and, um, if, and I hear what you're saying, but there's no parity, And I, I, there's no consistency to the charge from what I see.
No, there is.
There is.
There is.
There is.
So.
If this is based on length of the dock.
Yeah.
Then if water, they all have water available.
Right.
And then if, but if sewer is available, then they get hit with the water sewer. So it goes twenty-four feet below and then twenty-four feet to forty feet.
So I think what Catherine's saying is that Park mostly has water-only docks.
Right.
And larger docks.
And that's what she means when they haven't been hit with the sewer part, because they don't have sewers.
They don't have sewer, but when they do the expansion, then I'm assuming they're gonna go to the county and make sure that there's water, or E R Cs available. And that's when they'll have the increase on the live docks, because they'll be wider and getting heavier boats, which is what they're after.
One of the assessment changes was that, you have two, if you're where this, you got the general fund and then you have the utility fund, or the utility assessments. So the utility assessments were set on the point zero eight up to a point four, one and point eight for the condos. Then, um, for the general fund, it became consistent. Every living unit, with the exception of the docks, got a, a one E R C. Because there was no way to determine that if a single family didn't get the same value for the general fund services.
Right.
Same analogy was applied to the docks, where everybody played, paid on the general fund, the same rate for those services, which is point four. So they might for utilities be point oh eight, but for the general fund, it's point four. And the general fund E R Cs, uh, just under four hundred dollars, where with a uh, uh, utility E R C is about twelve hundred.
Seventeen oh three, I think.
Seventeen oh three, okay.
At one point, an eighty-foot boat was paying less than a seat at the bar.
Yeah, so that's why we changed.
Now, have, have.
That is what started.
I get, I understand, but when was the last time, I don't have a book. When was the last time anybody got any kind of an increase, other than a dock rental increase? When was the last time the CID increased their rates? How long ago, would you say?
Six years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, whenever, whenever.
When it went to the four fifty, there was that big increase. That was across the board. So whatever, when it went to seventeen hundred, then that was, they paid point oh eight or point four, point eight or whatever.
Was that before or after Prep Mac, Prep Mac bought?
Yeah, what, or the new, the increase or?
No, the, the six-year, the six-year. The six-year-old one, was that before he bought the slips?
Yes.
It was. So, then that's what he bought them at, was that, those numbers?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only change was not in, not in the quite, or cost per, charge per E R C. It was the allocation of, you know, we changed the uh, the E R C allocation.
The bigger boats have the same, um, E R C portion, the point four, as an R V. And that's one of the ways that it was come to the conclusion that that was reasonable.
That makes sense.
And when Ron came up with his proposal, uh, he said it was comparable to what's being charged in the other communities within the county.
He went all the way to Miami, I think.
Yeah, he went all the way.
Now, they want to, I don't know if this is true. The rumble is that they want to extend out and they wanna, but the extension is not to accommodate more boats. It's to accommodate larger boats by going to forty-foot, it can't be forty feet.
Well, they wanna park them different too.
Yeah.
Dock them different.
But a wider slip. Now they're, they're not that wide. They wanna make them wider.
Yeah, they're, right now, everything on A and C dock is going this way.
Right.
They wanna extend the dock almost half as much again and have the boats going this way.
Against the dock.
They fit longer boats in there. But they're have, at the beginning of the condo for the marina, it was a hundred and seventy-five docks and there still is a hundred and seventy-five docks. And I, that will never change unless something really happens. They're just taking their hundred and seventy-five and rearranging it differently.
Yeah, I guess, I guess their dock, when they rearrange it, it's gonna look like the N docks, where you park that way and not into a slip.
Instead of slips, cause they're bigger boats, makes sense. Okay.
It'll go, um, north and south as compared, no, it'll go east and west as compared to north and south, the way they're going now.
And now, so back to, to Dan. So what is the suit about? They just think they got hit too hard, too fast?
Uh, they don't think it's fair. I mean, all of the.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a combination of, they felt like they weren't given adequate notice, but uh, and, you know, opportunity to comment and all of that, but uh, we, you know, this was a process that went on for six months or more. Uh, they were very well informed.
They were.
And uh, they're not happy with the amount that they're having to pay. But uh, you know, that's it.
And another thing about that, and I don't know if it is a, a time with the county, but the first, the board adopted these increases in this month, and I don't remember what month it was. And the following tax year, Prep Mac, or everybody at the marina, I'll use everybody at the marina, should have gotten the increase. And that didn't happen. So they were even delayed a year from getting the increases.
Why didn't that happen?
I can't answer that.
I, I'd have to go back.
That would cause an aberration. I see that. Okay. I just wanted to get a feel for it. It's um, and the county is the one who determines their ability to extend out the, the slips, right?
State, I'm assuming they have a term.
County and state, yeah. Okay. And those, the slips are gonna all remain the same. They don't have water and sewer. They're pumped out? Even the large boats, the big boats?
A, I think the ones, some on E dock, F and G all have direct sewer hookup. A, C, um, and just a few up at the front of E do not have direct sewer. So they, right now, they're using pump out. Which still goes into our sewer plant.
Right, and you've gotta calculate that out, which I assume he did. And that's part of the deal. But that gets granted by the EPA, the pump out part.
Oh, governed by the, actually, the state does.
Right.
Here.
And last question. The, the slips, if I'm standing at the marina store and I'm assuming the ones to the right over there are Prep Mac, the one straight ahead, they call one a commercial dock for the manatee guy and stuff and.
That's D dock.
And then those other slips, are those owned by somebody else or those privately owned?
Well, C dock, C dock is between Cat and Berry, the hotel, and a few private, D dock, few private owners. That's the one directly across from the fire station.
Yeah.
Where the aquilodge is. E is Prep Mac. F is privately owned, okay?
The whole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
If you're looking at the store and going towards Sunrise Kay.
Yeah.
The first one there is the biggest, right at the other side of the boat ramp. That's all live boards. That's C, that's all Prep Mac. B is next. It's private fishing boats. There's nothing really big. There's one from Fort Lauderdale, which is a little bit bigger than a fishing boat. And then A dock is the one closest to Sunrise Kay. And right now, I think there's a big catamaran, there's another cabin cruiser that came in, and then John, the dock master's boat is at the end. And then there's a few little fishing boats scattered throughout A dock, so.
Have they, last question. I'm just, this is one of my favorite things. Were they ever given, now listen, I realize nobody gets an invitation, nobody, I get, with, did they ever ask to be put on the regular CID board meeting agenda for discussion in, in something like this? Were they ever asked to come and speak to the board directly in a public meeting like this?
I, they were here.
Yeah.
Did they ask to be here?
I met with Scott Preppin right after that.
Yeah.
Um, after the taxes came out and of course, he was concerned and I had Ron's sheets stating which docks were gonna be charged. Is that and the other thing, how Ron came to the conclusion and what docks were affected by all of the others. I went through that, just explaining the process of how we got here and the different E R Cs and the values. And I did that one-on-one with Scott in his office.
But did they ever speak, like, come here and speak to the board?
Their attorney did at the open hearing.
Okay, okay.
Well, there's public notice too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, but I mean, everybody, the meetings are public. I was just curious.
And even, even when the board adopted the rules.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
Even when the board adopted the rules, it was still a public meeting.
Everything.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Every, every property owner that was affected received the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of the meeting.
So they had the opportunity. That's why.
They just didn't expect it to be so much money when you had all those stocks.
Yes.
Okay.
They have about a hundred out of a hundred and seventy-five, I think, Prep Mac does.
And that's days you're saying.
And alligator boys.
Yeah. Who the hell is alligator boys?
I don't know. Prep Mac manages them.
Okay. Alright.
I haven't seen any boats leave, so I don't think.
Dan, did you have anything else on that?
Okay, as uh, Dan said, he's talked to somebody, referred to me. Uh, I probably have had three or four uh, inquiries about the, the parcel thirteen. Uh, nobody's come in and said, what I told them all is that, uh, right now, the last discussion is that you guys are looking for about fifty thousand per acre. And that uh, there would be no agreement, unless you guys change your mind, there'd be no agreement to just sell the property. You wanna know how it's gonna be utilized and everything.
May I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Are there any R F Ps right now?
No.
Okay, so these are just vague inquiries.
We could provide, and anytime they ask for it, we provide them the R F P that we submitted. But as far as a R F P or a proposal being submitted to us, no, we have not received anything right now.
Okay. Um, can, in your opinion, are the interested parties looking at buying the whole thing or pieces of it? It's a big question.
Nobody's been, everyone's talked about all of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but uh, you know, it, we've also had people just say, you know, they'd like to get a, a parcel or a little bit of it to put in storage or something like, has been mentioned, but we haven't received anything.
Nothing.
And I, Dan or I are in a position to say, yes, we, we think this is great. You know, we would bring any proposal to the board if you would make that determination.
Can I talk about the elephant in the room? It's something I've always wondered. I'm afraid I already know the answer. As far as I know, lot thirteen was never professionally appraised, not by Jeannie, but by a commercial real estate broker or, um, or appraiser. We never get a letter of appraisal. And my question is this, we're, we're throwing out ambiguous numbers. We don't really know what it's worth. You know, I mean, I could say I've got something in my pocket and it's worth fifty grand, but is it really? And so that's never happened since we bought lot thirteen. That concerns me. So I just think, I think we should have a professional real estate appraiser, appraiser, and get a letter of appraisal. Because otherwise, I do real estate. I don't do that. I do real estate, much smaller things. And I'm gonna tell you, it's a nightmare. Okay, it's a real nightmare. And, and I just think we should get a real letter of appraisal from a highly regarded real estate appraiser. Pay him and get a letter of appraisal. Okay, we can use it as an argument to a prospective buyer. But more importantly, we're gonna be on the money, okay? We're not gonna just say, we want two million dollars for it. Okay, now, that's not how it works. We, so, I'm just saying, look, I think we should have an appraiser give us a real appraisal on what it's worth today, right here, right now, in Dodge City. And we start with that, is that a motion? Yeah, I like.
Wait, 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 there's only one problem. We don't know if we have the waterfront rights yet.
Right.
So you're gonna get, need two different appraisals, one with water, one without water, cause we're trying to get the waterfront rights on the canal. It's ten feet owned by the county. So I don't know how Dan's progressing with that, but you know, until, and then once the hotel comes down. Acquire that, are we gonna acquire that too? Or are we gonna let somebody else acquire it? You know, I mean, there's, I don't know. That, that's another, what, ten acres or something?
Six acres. Now, the thing, let me ask you, I don't know the answer. The waterfront, to me, is useless. I thought, and I don't know. I thought you were doing the waterfront in case you put the pumping station in. It's actually South Florida Water Management District.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a town.
Collier County owns the canal. And uh, there's been some accretion where the, there was a, an old boat ramp that allowed access to that canal from that property. There's been accretion over the years. And essentially, what we've talked to the county about is that we would wanna be able to come in and dredge that accreted soil back out so that that boat ramp is functional. For a canoe kayak type launch, for a powerboat.
Okay, cause that's really all it's worth. It, it can only, down here to the bridge and you can only go up to the squares. I don't know that it's worth that much money.
It is worth something.
Yeah.
You know, but.
But you know what I'm saying.
And the water management district has control of what ownership is to the county.
Right. The water management districts have a ten-foot easement on each side for access and maintenance.
I thought.
You know, at, at the point we got to with the county was, they were wanting us to take the hotel and be responsible for tearing it down, for them to give us access or ownership, maybe even of that canal. So those talks have not progressed. And at this point, we've, you know, basically thought that, you know, until we've got somebody that's got a project and let them manage dealing with the county as part of their development approvals, getting that dredged out.
Now, as far as the hotel, we've been talking about that. Originally, the last guys that bought the hotel at the courthouse steps that defaulted didn't do their due diligence. They sat in here and they said, we never realized it was gonna cost seven hundred fifty thousand to a million to tear it down and haul it away and discard it. That was four years ago. Then all of a sudden now, the county's got it four years later. It's theirs. They own it free and clear. And they get a bid for three hundred eighty-eight thousand, which is half. Now, if I'm reading the last email correctly, it kinda looks like the county didn't figure on getting rid of all of it. Is it? Do they have a place to dump it all?
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're, they're, it's water stripping of the asbestos.
Yeah.
But because of the late rains, it's too soaked and it's in the material, so they think that it'll, it'll be a change order for the contractor, but he's gonna have to dispose all of the rubble, because it's in relation to the uh, the asbestos. And they're gonna have to dispose all of it in a certified landfill, probably a type.
So is that all it's gonna cost them? We don't know that.
We don't care though, is that it? I mean, it's.
It's their property.
Yeah, but, well, no, my point is, was it in the bid from the demo people, or is it a surprise to the county which could hold it up?
I don't know. That's.
My thing though is, we don't own the property.
Right.
And in the past, let's say there was an estimate of seven hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And that was all part of, we wanted to get involved with it or not, because that seven hundred fifty thousand was coming from the owners.
Right.
So, and we're not in the real estate business.
Right.
So now the county has it. The county's doing what it has to do.
Right.
Forced to do.
Right.
Do I care what it's costing the county?
No, that's not my point. My point is, is it gonna prohibit them or slow them up from moving forward?
No. According to, I think it's.
They know they have to do it.
Smith, she says, everything's still a go, even if they have to haul all of the debris to a licensed landfill.
Okay, so that's not gonna block that.
It's not gonna delay it.
Which leads us to the six and a half vacant acres that they're gonna bulldoze.
And they're probably, you know, they're, they're gonna pass that off on the sale of the property.
Yeah.
So, right where it costs, it's gonna go up.
Right.
If they've got to increase costs.
And they haven't put a number?
No.
I don't think they decided what they're doing with it yet.
There's a process they probably have to go through as far as offering it up to other governments.
government agencies and so forth first, and then if you declare surplus property of that.
Right.
Well, we want fifty thousand an acre. They get fifty thousand an acre, they lose, so they're going to need to get more.
Yeah.
Where did we come up with the number fifty thousand?
That came from Jeannie Cumbel, who, you know, she's not an appraiser.
No.
So she just, uh, she said, she looked at what other property was going, vacant property was going for in the area at this, you know, on the eastern side of Callier County, and she said anywhere from forty to sixty thousand. So he threw out a number of fifty.
It's still unknown if we have the water or not.
Yeah.
Right.
And what's going to happen with the vacant building? One last thing.
The dormitory, it's not part of that.
I know.
Okay.
What did they, there was discussion that, I forget his name, that owns the dormitory tract. I think he asked to have it included when the county tore down the hotel. I'm not sure if I have that right or not.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard of that.
I don't think so.
Um, okay, so he's doing that separately. Is there? I would really like to send a letter to Mateo, I think his name is. That thing is disgusting. People are coming in in the middle of the night, they're spray painting it. I mean, no one else would be allowed to do that. I'm not trying to make his diff, his life difficult, but it's not going away tomorrow with five hundred grand. Can we get him to paint that over so it looks presentable?
He doesn't communicate, even, uh, uh, the, his agent in, I forgot his name, Paul, I think it is. Uh, but, uh, we've been going through, the last cleanup we got was through code enforcement.
Yeah. That was for the hotel, right?
No, that was for the dormitory.
Okay, so who did, can we do that?
Sure.
Let's do that. Because it's really damaging Orchid Cove resale values, and we're coming into real estate season. You know, Orchid Cove for the first time.
Cleaning it up right now with the demolition going on, is anybody going to notice what's clean or dirty?
They will in a few weeks.
They'll assume it's going to be, yeah, but once it's destroyed, I think is when we go in and clean it up.
Yeah, that's fine.
They're making quality to code enforcement.
Yeah, but I just think, just paint it over. Because I mean, kids are coming in in the middle of the night, painting graffiti, it's on YouTube, and it's, it's ruining real estate values here. He doesn't have the right to do that, and it needs to be taken care of.
Sure, but I think it's going to be a hundred percent approved when the hotel's gone.
I do too, but then that's just going to stick out. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that North Hope Cal parcel thirteen? Uh, the invasive vegetation update, I kind of hit on that.
Yeah.
We're at the point where we have turned it over to enforcement. The meter changeout program, we still have not gotten a response from Ferguson. They've contacted us, but when they sent the test results to, uh, Mueller, who's the manufacturer of the meters, their response was, uh, it looked good, but they wanted another sample. And that's going to take another two weeks, and I'm not, you know.
Which one of those two is that?
That's Ferguson.
Okay.
And this is Waterworks.
Uh, I know, that's a positive displacement. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, that's correct. Ferguson's is the one, Mueller's the one on the right with the board in the, the.
And this is Waterworks.
Yeah.
And this is, the one, the meter thing is all budget, this whole thing is budget.
Yes.
Right?
It's, it's your CIP, it's not specifically, but yes.
It's not specifically earmarked for that, but this is a CIP project we're working on.
Okay.
Wait a minute, this is the electronic one, right?
Right.
They're both electronic.
They're both electronic.
This is all self-contained in that one, it looks like.
Yeah, I know, I like that, simple one.
I'd like to make a motion that we go with this company and get this rolling.
That is the, uh, Waterworks.
That is Waterworks.
Let's get it rolling.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that was one of the three options we had. So you're going to switch from Ferguson to Waterworks, go with the solid state.
Yeah.
And, uh, that would be the, it's a little less than what you're going to pay with Ferguson.
Yeah, there was one question, um, Dan.
Yes.
Someone asked me, a neighbor asked me, are these either one of them costing sixty bucks a piece to install?
Uh, I don't remember the number. That was the number we came up with, but remember, it's not just the installation. It's cleaning out the meter pit, it's, uh, it's.
Sixty bucks.
Two boxes, sixty bucks, cheap.
Yeah, oh no, just as a, yeah, yeah, so it's sixty bucks a piece.
It was a higher.
No, I just want to know.
Leave it alone.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I wish we would have seen that before.
Yeah, that's a brainer.
We saw that, we didn't see that one. Yeah, well, we just have to finish it.
Oh, yeah, I seconded it.
Uh, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mr. Jensen.
Yeah.
Seconded by Ms. Holloway, uh, to award the bid to, and that would be their initial bid, the one for one eighty-six, uh, to, uh, Waterworks.
Right.
Okay. That one favored?
I.
Now, there were some optional items too, though, some larger meters, I believe.
Yeah, so they have a meter up to two inch, uh, for the handful of meters that we have that are above two inch, they use a separate company with their, their software.
So, so there may be some additional costs.
Yes.
Beyond a one eighty-six.
Yeah, so that, that wasn't part of the bid, it's just to award it to, and there was, uh, in the budget, it's covered in the budget.
Second, Pete, the other one was two twenty, wasn't it?
Two oh three.
Two oh three, two oh two, yeah.
Do we need that?
Well, there's just a handful, there may be five of the larger meters, like over the hotel, so yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, they're just figuring, that company in-house, they only build up to a two-inch meter.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So for the bigger one, they use a, a similar meter, but they put their software in it.
Okay, so you're not saying all, you're just saying where needed.
Yeah, like five at the.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And leave that pricing through the bid process too, for that also, so you got to also reestablish.
Oh, I like that, I like that.
The only drawback, Ferguson's local and Waterworks is.
Seven hundred.
That's why I mean.
Do you see that as an issue for them?
I, I, I personally have no experience with either meter, the, the one itself contained appeals to me because the cord worries me, but again, they're both here in Florida. I, I, and I called the reviews and all of.
At the center of the state, it's far from us.
No.
Right.
How much we done?
It's closer to Orlando.
How many extras?
Yeah.
How much was that?
How many extra meters are we buying? I mean, we're going to have something on hand, right?
Uh, we're going to get eight fifty, uh, and we need eight hundred and eleven.
Okay.
And so we have thirty or forty extras. You don't want too many, because if you buy them, then the warranties are.
Then you're on the right.
And maybe, I don't know, maybe we should even back that number down. I, I, is forty too many to have?
Well, they're guaranteed for how long?
Twenty years.
And, and everything for the first ten, right? Yeah, for ten, ten years, that's paraded. Yeah.
Come to daddy.
So then why have it, yeah, then what's the problem?
Yeah, let's just roll.
Why, I, maybe just five extra, you know, maybe one extra.
Okay, we can, we can kick that back to.
Well, do you make sure, so like for new homes that are being built, like we don't order them?
Right.
Well, I mean.
This year, almost all.
Yeah, I, I would say five is plenty, because I can order them.
The, the, the builders that I talked to, they said that side's going to be built up this year, that everybody's building that fast, so you might want to include those plus five.
Okay.
Include the lots plus five.
All right, okay. So, and the, the budget you guys already set was fine, which included the insulation and then the.
Can anybody hear me?
Chris, I can hear you on there.
Okay.
I can hear y'all, we just don't have them.
Okay, yeah, I think they must have dropped off the wifi there.
Hello?
Y'all hear? Hello? Who's? Someone just called in?
Yeah, it's me, it's Dan.
Oh.
But it ain't working either, I can't, I can't hear him on the phone.
I think, yeah, no, they've, uh, it's not that, they've, they've dropped off in the clubhouse. Uh, just accident.
Yeah, they just completely disappeared. So maybe the meeting's over.
I'll give them a call, see what.
Yeah, I would call them.
Just for television.
Correct.
That's the.
Right now, I don't know what.
I think I'm going to drop off y'all, they need me, just don't call me.
Okay, will do. Bye. Cal, I see you back on the list, but you're muted. Are you there?
See, we don't have any fiber optic cable over here.
No fiber optic. So I think it's not, it's not a CID thing.
This is what we discussed.
Yeah.
Do we want it to be like we supply water to the community? Do we want to supply this to the community? That's how we started this, and meanwhile, the community heard Century Link was dropping Prism, so then we pushed a little forward, saying, well, is now the time to do it? Does the community want it? Or, you know, do they want it through the CID? And that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anybody on K's Drive, and I, I don't know how anybody on Newport feels, you know, we're off Newport, I don't know people there, but there's two board members.
The problem you're going to have.
Without, without going through the CID, is there any, um, force, person that is very community oriented that would approach Century Link and say, I understand you have fiber going to Stellamaris North? Can we talk about getting it to everybody?
And I think that's what the CID, like, homeowners don't have it. Who is the lead here? There's no HOA.
Well, the problem.
Who's, who's the nominating person? And, and the.
And I think Cal looks like a dominating person.
Somebody that comes to mind, and, and by all means, and she was, um, at the two twelve when we were going through the Century Link negotiations is Debbie Van Mark.
Yeah, she lives on, oh, yeah.
She's off of K's, the very last house by the third.
Good idea.
She was involved with.
That's a good idea.
When we get it, just throwing the name out. I don't know if she'd be interested in seeing what Century Link can do for K's Drive.
Well, she has nothing right now, like we have nothing, so it's, I'll approach her, yeah, I'll approach her.
Call her, Terry.
But meanwhile, do we want to go further? What do we want to do?
I, I.
I don't know, I mean, then it means you would have more management responsibilities as far as collecting bills and everything else.
No, he's just doing the research to see.
No, but I mean, if the CID supplied cable, it's no different than.
Well.
It wouldn't be like that.
It wouldn't be like that. They would still provide it, they would be the provider, you're just the guarantee or that, uh, they're going to get eight hundred connections.
Where the confusion is coming in, and you're right, is you're coming to CID before and after this board, you're coming to CID as a central governing body, which it isn't. The issue I see is you've got one thing at Orchid Cove, you've got ten other things across the street, so there's eleven things. And it's, it's easier here because we have a hundred sixteen units, one association, one board. Over there, it's like herding cats, and everybody's got an opinion. So the only way, I mean, for Orchid Cove, you can have a board meeting and it's ten minutes. Over there, you have multiple associations, you have homes with no associations, and all of you individually would have to decide what you're going to do, and that's, I don't see how that's going to happen. I just don't. Uh, the only thing, my wife actually came up with the idea, it's a really good one, each one of those associations has a chairman, I'm assuming, or a spokesman. Get just that person, and all of you meet at the restaurant or something, advertise it on next door. Get just that person, and all of you meet at the restaurant or something, advertise it on Next Door, that's your central location.
Is what we're saying.
Well, you vote on somebody, you guys vote on somebody, and when I say you guys, we can be included too. If, I, I don't know if they want fiber optics here, but what I'm saying is, there's, there's gotta be a smaller group, that, and one of those people, like Van Wert, gets elected, to head it up. Or a committee would be even better. And the only thing I could tell you is.
But, I, I apologize, but you don't need to tell us, because our master association is dealing with people.
They're doing it.
We are completely out of anything that the CID may run center, because we don't know what our options are.
Because these other associations, they've signed tender contracts, yeah.
When, I've got people that are involved trying to solve the problem.
So then.
I think K's Drive is different, because there's fiber there, half pots, Sunrise, or, um, Stellamaris North has fiber, so they have internet, they don't, we don't know what's gonna happen with their television. But you have a whole lot of more private homes, and Stellam, and Stellamaris South, that may say, we really wanna have fiber there, and then, K's Drive people can work with CenturyLink. I don't think with, over there on Newport, and out of Newport and alone, I don't think you can include anybody there in anything that you may consider, because there is so much, and everybody has their own protocols over there, so.
Yeah, you could probably only include the homeowners.
I'd like to make a motion, CID drops out of it, because, I, at least for now, because it's not a CID issue, and I, I think it's gonna bog us down a lot, until, everybody that, I mean, there's like two million decisions over there. And the worst one is gonna be the homeowners. There's, there needs to be a master association for the whole place, and there isn't. Um, but it's not a CID thing, like you just said, no matter what we do, it isn't gonna affect you. Okay, so there's a chunk. If the folks over here at Orchid Cove don't want, there's another chunk. So we're gonna be in a position, which we shouldn't be in, chasing a bunch of things that we shouldn't be involved in. So I'd like to.
You can get the motion to drop this topic, yes, or second.
I'll second that.
It will certainly help you, but it's gotta come together first.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. It's too much.
Uh, you, you're, I, I didn't see you, yours, so it's three, one?
No, I'm in favor.
Oh, you're in favor, yeah, three, one.
Too much.
It was Ms. O'Connell fully named.
I'll contact CenturyLink, go to that side.
That's all I was gonna tell you. They're, they're not gods, they're in, they're in the business of making money.
Yeah.
You're bringing the money.
Catherine, you have, for your association, you have everything you need. If any of the associations needs the information, our research will pass it on.
Okay, that'd be one. I, you know how rumors go, I heard, and this is the word, that CenturyLink has a, an agreement with DirecTV, to put in addition, I use that word loosely, but using the fiber coming into each of the associations. It's gonna be a different setup than the regular DirecTV, but I haven't heard anything, other than that.
Put the tax on the vendor.
Right.
And, uh, the, there's enough associations that they can come up with whatever guarantees they're looking for, except for the single family, and they'll just have to deal with them individually.
There, there'll be a meeting when something happens.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see, then the electrical panel, we talked about that, it's twenty-four hundred, and so that is, uh, uh, being done now. The entrance, uh, the main entrance sign repairs.
The monument?
Pardon me?
The monument you're talking about?
No, no, that's that embellishment on the main sign. Uh, the board, you guys did that, uh, two thousand nine, I think it was, so there are no records on it, we tried to go to the vendor, they have nothing. Uh, we do have Mitch found the sunburst.
You did? I looked up and there it is. It's back in the story.
Get it sprayed, man, and throw it up there.
Uh, but the rest of it, we just don't have, so I think you're gonna have to look at either a new sign, uh, and if that's something you have an interest in, then we'll start, uh, you know, getting some estimates, and. But that was drawn and, and developed specifically for you, and we went through the whole sign replacement, I guess what I'd rather, think you'd rather do, and you probably know this better than I do, David, is, uh, 'cause it, it was expensive to get the sign permit. So, if we just replace it with the same sign, that wouldn't be a violation, we wouldn't need another permit, would we?
Good question. Good question. My gut feeling is you probably would need to be, how long, how long has it been down?
Since the hurricane.
Since the hurricane, yeah.
Do you remember if there was ever anything else on that sign beside the sunburst?
No, it was.
'Cause it looks really empty.
Yeah, and, and it all had to do with county code, and our six foot was on the north-south of the side of forty-one, which is lower than the south side, so we had to go by this. I wasn't on the board at the time when all this was happening.
There was something underneath the sunburst though.
Yeah, well, that sign's still there.
Yeah, okay.
It says part of the islands, and it's got the logo.
So he's got the sunburst.
So the only thing.
Just throw it up, okay.
Yeah, the worst, worst thing that could happen is they.
Mitch, where's the lift truck?
Say you notice that you're a violation, and you.
Yellow.
You know, just repair it.
Nice bright yellow, like.
Is it a repair? Yes, it's a repair.
Yeah, but he's done my, he's done my.
It's back there, I don't know, I mean, they could at least use it to, to make a new one, but, I can do whatever you want.
Well, from the picture, it didn't look too bad.
It did, it did look too bad.
Yeah, probably just came down in the wind.
What, it broke off the brackets or the sign itself?
I, I don't, I didn't personally pull it out, uh, one of my guys drug it out of the shit.
It looks like it's bolted through the concrete.
In the picture, it's like it's stacked under some stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Repair order.
Yeah, let's, maybe just right up. See if there's.
We'll try and go off of that.
Great.
Okay. Uh, the next item would be the resignation of Mr. Davis, you have a, uh, Capus Enchicapi at his email resigning, and so we just needed a motion to accept with regrets, Mr. J, uh, Mr. Davis's resignation from the board.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation with regrets.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, uh, how would you like to go about filling that position? Typically, what's.
I think we should do it the way we always do it, just, uh, advertise, have people apply, give it a deadline, just the way you always do it.
Okay.
Only, I would like to add, add, adhere to the deadline, and we'll just give people plenty of time to decide if they wanna sit on the board or not.
Okay, uh, so do you wanna set a deadline for receipt? Uh, would it be three weeks from now, which would give us a week to collect them and give them to you before the next meeting, or do you?
Next meeting comes up quick because of the first being on Friday, so it comes up on the fifteenth, it's early. So I don't know, we got three weeks, do we?
Uh.
Well, we have to have three weeks, but I mean, that's gonna cut it close, right?
Yeah.
You mean to make it till February?
No, I think we need to make a decision.
Yeah, I think we need a decision, let's, if we can do it in January, let's do it.
Yeah, let's, let's put it on Next Door and stuff, put it for two weeks, you know? And you've got the application form already.
Okay, and then I'll forward to everyone the applications, and if you, anyone wants to contact those, uh, applicants, then you can do that, talk to them, uh, and, uh, you would like it to be at the next meeting, or?
Yeah, I think we should have them at the next meeting and, uh, make a decision.
Okay.
There won't be hordes of them.
We will process that, then, the ad will go, or the announcement will go on the website, uh, possibly even yet today, but we've got a couple of those, we can just use that template. Uh, that's all for new business, any supervisor requests?
I can, that's you.
Okay.
Couple of questions, and this is gonna have to go to the community when that, um. I come home at night, I work second shift at the hospital, and, um, a couple of times, uh, now we've had the bear hit up front, and that's not the first bear, that's the second bear in Gators, and, uh, one night I was coming home and there was guys fishing up, you know, netting off the bridge.
Yeah.
At eleven thirty, twelve at night. Um, so a couple of things. I know we have a lot of lights around here, nobody likes lights, uh, but maybe we can see about the county or FPL, up to the people, uh, putting lights somewhere around the bridge, you know what I mean? Just something, 'cause I, I drive over the bridge, and I also got, these guys are parked there, half of them, they're, sometimes it's an old truck, and we had that one bad accident out here one time, but I think, I don't know if the kid was drunk going the wrong way and the thing, uh, but I wanted to light up the bridge a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if anybody's for or against, that's something.
I'd say I'm for, because I came home the other night, it wasn't here, but in the darkness, 'cause there was no one in front of me or behind me, there was someone netting on one of these bridges, no car around, and I drive a truck, and my mirrors are out, and that's my biggest fear, hitting him with the mirror.
Yeah.
I've never seen the guy, it's miracle I didn't hit him.
Yeah, I hit that hip.
And spotty light too.
Yes, that, that's not good.
Yeah, but, you lease all your light, so, you know, what I'll do is get a standard, uh, proposal with both sides of the north, or the east and west side.
Unless you put it in the middle, you know, and they just shine over both sides.
So maybe they can go LED.
Yeah.
Well, they do, yeah, LED is their standard.
They're LED, but I mean, are these LED?
Yeah, how many things that are replaced, they go with LED.
And they can shade them, you said, too.
They can shade them if requested, they'll put up a shield.
Yeah, hold on.
I think also, as much as I hate this idea, I think we should ask the sheriffs if they can watch it a little more, because I'm telling you, well, people are blowing through here now to get to the single lane.
That's, I wanted to do the speed reduction.
Yeah.
Sign here, too, like a forty-five from the.
I mean, they are flying through here.
That's not your choice.
That DOT.
The DOT, and we'll get with the county and with the request to, uh, reduce the speed on forty-one, uh, from the east and the west, uh.
Where it spreads out.
Yeah.
We've got on to forty-five.
Because it's really getting crazy.
And they go too fast.
Yeah. And but putting up a sign is not gonna change people driving. No.
No, but it's a good speed trap, so the cops will be here, I'm sure.
But unfortunately, yeah. You're right, it takes the cruisers, it's true.
They probably have to do a traffic control order, but, uh, you know. We'll get that handled.
Okay, and then I got one last thing that's just gonna be controversial too. Um, I know it was brought up before about, uh, egress entry and leaving, uh, anyone in either Orchid Cove or the, uh, other two sides, uh, Newport or K's, um, 'cause of, uh, people coming in here late at night and stuff. Now, I wasn't thinking about video cameras or anything like that, uh, but I was wondering if we could do, and this would just be preventative, and it's, I, I have some weird ideas sometimes, but, you know, like the traffic light cam, uh, the, uh, stop on red cameras that they eliminated, I was wondering if we could have something between like twelve AM and five AM, that just snapped a picture of everybody that came into the development, and left the development. Now, it's not, um, anything that we would record, I mean, maybe the firefighters could keep the information there or something, um, or somebody, and it's, and I, but I want the, uh, I want there to be an actual, like a flash, so people know there, you know what I mean, as a deterrent? That there was a flash, and they go, and then have, you know, your license plate has been just registered, but only late at night.
They would dump that on us, it would have to be.
That we would, well, we wouldn't use it, we wouldn't use it unless there was an issue for somebody to review it, like the police to review it or something.
Yeah, but someone maintaining the storage of it.
And you have to record it.
Well, yeah, just, just pictures, that's it, not, not video, just.
It's like your toll booth.
I'm, it's, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know what everybody thinks about that, it's a little bit of, uh, because you're about forty-eight hour type thing too, if there's a incident, then you can recover that in forty-eight hours or whatever.
But does it, is that considered invasion of privacy?
That's why I'm throwing it out there.
You know, when I cheat on my husband, I don't wanna be seen leaving.
That's right.
Why would you like to see this? What, what are you trying to accomplish?
Just as a deterrent, uh, from people coming in here at night, I mean, once in a while I would, uh, spray for Chad, and there'd be people talking in parking lots, there's people out back here by the water treatment plant, lights on, shooting the breeze, I mean, there's cops back there too at night, you know.
Only the beginning.
Two, three in the morning, and it's just, I just wanna make people aware that we've at least got some kind of eyeball on what's going on here at night.
We're saying over the years, there's more and more people cruising.
Oh, yeah.
And everything's expanding this way, you know, I mean, we're getting more, we're not far out anymore, you know, we're not east, uh, west Miami anymore, we're, you know.
Well, the people who are doing that are going to avoid the cameras, I mean, they're that smart.
There's no control on the gates, that's right.
Well, no, I'm not talking about a gate or anything.
No, 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 I know, but there's not enough control, that's right.
I think that if they were intent on wrongdoing, then they wouldn't drive through the camera, you know what I mean?
They have no choice, they, they have to take it.
That would have to be big time, though, I mean, somebody that was gonna pay the attention, I'm talking about, you know, people coming to see fishing poles or motors.
But that is big time.
Wow, yeah.
I agree with you, by the way, but I'm gonna tell you, it's, I agree with you a hundred percent, in Key West, we have a guardhouse, twenty-four hour security, cameras for and out, and they do exactly what you wanna do, but, the problem is, we found, the car has to go through a narrow space, one car wide, and the camera does get the license plate and the car and the whole thing, and it works like crazy, except, you've gotta slow the traffic, you've gotta funnel it, and it's gonna be just enough room for one vehicle to go in and out.
You know, the other thing, I think, uh, one of the councils, when they were talking about gates, basically we stated, you know, if your association wants cameras, then you have, the same way I have a camera on my home.
Yeah.
So, if, if anybody's really going through, I've seen where people stop and ask, you have the film of this or that, especially out in the estates, you see that a lot.
Oh, well, the reason I, I brought it up when I was driving down here from New York just recently, there was no tolls, they just took a picture of your license plate, and I'm moving sixty-five, and they're getting my license plate and sending me a bill, so.
That stuff's high tech.
Well.
That's big, buddy.
This is forty hours.
You're right. Okay, so.
All right, I just brought it up.
The lights on the bridge and the.
Speed reduction.
Of speed. Nothing on the cameras. Okay.
I guess everybody gets your arm.
Pal, this is Audrey, may I just, I have another suggestion, why don't we just have a, uh, no, no fishing bridge signs? Have the county enforce that? Because it's a safety issue.
I think there's sixteen bridges from here to the old Marco Road.
Well, you can add that if you want. Yeah, you can add that if you want, but I still wanna get the speed reduction.
Oh, no, I'm with you, I, I.
You were talking earlier about trying to reduce. Let's just hold off.
Yeah.
Board finish, and then we've got the audience.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else from the, we've got Russ, is there any other board members? Okay, I got Audrey's comment about no fishing from the bridge, sir.
Okay, so, you were talking earlier about reducing the ad for water or non-ad for water, and now you're talking about lights, cameras, all these things cost money, and there's a permanent process for these things, so.
We, we lost the light.
Some of these high ticket items would have to be in your CID, not just in your register.
So it all.
Can you mix math? Mix this into here.
Until, until you go cost, you know, do you know if it's a CIP item or, you know.
Okay, right.
If it's expensive or not, but then, it's, once you hear about it, then you can move further with making a decision and finding out what the community wants.
Right. I'm a huge fan of finding out what the community wants, a huge fan, and I think we need to do more of that with workshops, I really do, and the community needs to step up and say, we're coming to the workshop and voice their opinion, you're right, because you're right, what's worth more to you, a hundred bucks in your pocket a year, or all this stuff? If you tell us the hundred bucks, okay, no lights, you're right, you're exactly right, it's what you want, but, but we're just talking about it first, and I agree with them.
Yeah.
I agree with them.
There was, there was an item on Next Door, and, you know, I saw it, I didn't respond to it, but it, it got my curiosity up, and it was someone asking, why don't we plant a hundred trees? And, to me, it said, that's a good question, why don't we plant a hundred trees? But then my thought is, where? I can't plant it on private property or whatever, but my mind's working on it, and, you know, it's a point, and I don't shove it aside, but.
Oh, no, no, it's a point. And you're right. Over, remember who told you this. Over the next two years, the, the community is gonna have to get involved in what we're doing. You're gonna have to get involved. We need your input because there's a lot of stuff coming. And we need your input. Okay? It's what you want, not what I want, not what he wants. It's what you want. That, and workshops are the only way we're gonna be able to determine that. And we can do workshops. It's no big deal. You gotta come to the workshop and say, I don't want that. Or we really want this. Okay? I think he's right. I think there's a lot of people that have lost boat motors and stuff that are gonna want some kinda security in here. I'm surprised it hasn't come up before.
It has.
Oh, it has? Yeah. Because I mean, that's a big deal. Security is gonna be the number one issue here within a year. Remember who told you that?
Uh, Cal, question. On, now that we've had this horrible virus going on and whatever, we've done online meetings. And if we still have the option for that, are we getting more community? You see more community signing on?
Uh, let's see. Looks like we've got one, uh, two, three. We've got three people that are on the.
Yeah. Cause I, I like that because that gives everybody the opportunity, even when you're up north.
Yeah. And that's, and that's what we plan on doing. Every meeting will have the go to meetings.
Yeah, I like that.
You guys have to have three people physically here.
Right.
Okay? Are there any other comments from the audience? Yes?
Um, in October, Cal, I had asked about the, um, legality of the towing signs going down Newport Drive. At the last meeting, of course, Dan was gone. I had sent you a picture. Had we had anything done on that?
Uh, I have not heard from Dan on that.
He was gonna check the statute after he got a picture of what the sign says.
I'll, I'll, I'll remind him that, uh, and that was, uh, towing signs.
Yeah.
And the board would have to adopt a rule. And then Dan would, uh, let's see if that might be him now. Uh, somebody's trying to text me. Oh, it came in during meetings. Uh, signed proposals in my email. So we do have a proposal. We'll check on it. So I just got it.
For what?
Signs. But for towing. And I, I'm not sure what it is. I just got a text that said, signs are in my email. But I'm not sure. You still have to, if you're going to tow, the board has to set a, a rule. And it has to be approved at rulemaking. And then you can tow.
Well, doesn't the sign itself have to be according to Florida statute?
That's correct.
Okay. And that was my question on the signs we have out there, legal according to Florida statutes. Dan was gonna check on it.
Uh, are they ours? Or they're, they're?
Yes, we put them up to keep people off the grass.
Okay. Uh, towing signs legal.
Do you have a tow company listed on your signs? Oh, okay. You probably need a tow company.
Yeah, you, you, you.
And the, and the signs they would provide would be legal, of course.
I think the board needs to, um, look at what needs to be done to be legal for it. And I think the board needs to look at each area where the signs are on Newport to say if it really needs a sign. Or do you just want people to stay off the grass? And I think the towing was a way of keeping people off the grass, which it doesn't.
Like you said, the tow company would probably have the legal aspects.
You have, you, things have to be this big, this high, this color, this information. I mean, there's a whole statute on it.
Okay. And so, uh, what we could do, if the board would like to consider setting up towing requirements or restrictions, we can pursue that.
I, I do wanna say you're probably gonna have to have one person. You're gonna have to have somebody authorized to deal with the towing company. You can actually call, like the sign themselves to be prevented. But if you wanna talk about actually towing, I think you have to have an authorized person, you know, contacting the towing company.
Authorized by this board.
Okay, so you're saying fake tow sign and a real tow sign?
No, real.
Real.
The minute you tow a car, and I'm with you, I'm with you. I'm just telling you. The minute you tow a car, people don't just lay down and say, oh no, you towed my car. They threaten you. So you're right. It's gotta be by the book all the way down. And it has to be one liaison. That's right.
Well, that's my question.
I know, uh, I always get confused. Stellamaris North and South, but the newer one, is that north or south?
North.
North, north. Uh, their association put up signs so that they wouldn't park on the main part and they would park on their like turnaround. Um, but they did that on their own. That their board approved it and they did it. So how, how do we?
Private property. Yeah.
I think those signs are, they have no parking on the grass at any time. I, Stellamaris, I think Stellamaris North has actual signs giving the association the right to tow vehicles that they wanna do.
But that doesn't get us in trouble.
No, that has nothing to do with you. Well, that was my question. The CID board is in the business of the impact that comes from.
And there is a substantial impact.
I mean, is that part of CID business?
Uh, not right now.
Well, they're your roads.
Yeah, the roads are.
You can regulate and manage the road system that you, that's part of your responsibility.
The CID.
The CID.
So when the association puts up those signs.
That's not private property.
Right.
Those roads aren't the CID.
Those roads are not committed to us? How can we fix the drainage?
Uh, well, portions of the road is. You're talking about Stellamaris North and villages. And, uh, the road going in is yours. And they shouldn't put up a sign.
I believe that's where the signs are.
Yeah.
The road going in.
Sometimes they do it on their own.
The cul-de-sac going off to the right, you just haven't agreed to maintain it until they fix it up.
Well, the signs, I mean, what you're talking about, are these signs affecting people parking on, I mean, you don't want people parking on the grass?
No.
Right, well, that's different. I mean, do you guys control that? Or is that your property?
Yeah. Isn't just the road or the grass?
Well, it's the road anyway.
Take down, take down the tow signs and put up what decorative saying, don't park on the grass.
Sure, you can do that.
I mean, there's even signs going down Newport where there's only this much grass and it's got two, I'll use the word makeshift, tow away signs. I mean, that's kinda ridiculous. But up here at, in front of the, um, Marina, there was a truck parked in the center. I took a picture of his license plate, which he didn't like. He came out, asked me about it. And he said, well, you don't want me to answer my phone when I'm driving, do you? So, you know, all you wanna do is keep people off the grass. That's all you wanna do. And then two, they park on the side. They would park in the center, but they park on the side of the grass. So there's really no easy fix to the whole thing.
Well, running in the grass, they're gonna screw up our, how many times have they screwed up our irrigation till that's around?
Anyway, I was just questioning the legality of the signs that are posted.
I think you can do that here regardless. If you wanna put no parking on the grass, that's not, you're not putting up tow signs.
Right. The one thing to prepare yourself for, and that's fine, you're right, is if you go the towing route without enforcement, signs mean nothing. The minute you start towing four or five cars, the news spreads. They're gonna tow your car. But it creates a lot of unrest as well. So maybe please nicely, please don't park on the grass. So we look a little user friendly. Let's try that, you know? For civil people, that'll work. For the rest, it won't.
Okay, I'll get Dan's input on that also. We'll report back next.
And then I know those don't have to be, uh, code. They can just be anything.
Just do something decorative and a sign on a stick, please. Looks like a Halloween card.
Okay. Any other audience comments? Okay. Uh, here we're done. If you're ready to adjourn, we would have a, listen to adjourn.
All right. Listen to adjourn today's meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are done.